Okay. We will have everyone take their seats and we'll call to order the regular meeting for Monday, March 25th, 2019. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a silent prayer.
Alderman Brunelli. Alderman Cavalo.
Here.
Alderman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorsa.
Here.
Alderman Giacome.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman, Alderman woman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman New Jane.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Pernaruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We're just gonna go out of our ordinary routine for a moment. Last September, we lost a great friend on the Board of Aldermen. Dedicated public servant, a terrific Alderman when Greg Hadley unexpectedly passed away. And we have a tradition when Aldermen leave the Board of giving them a plaque to honor their years of service to the Board. And unfortunately Greg passed away, we didn't have a chance to give him the plaque. But we have asked Mrs. Hadley, Greg's family, to come today because we want to present them with the plaque to honor Greg's time here in the city. And so it's, the plaque, why don't you come on up? We just want to do the plaque is presented in memoriam Greg Hadley for the City of Waterbury Aldermen from January 1st, 2011 to September 15th, 2018. In sincere appreciation for his commitment, dedication, and service to the City of Waterbury as a member of the Board of Aldermen, may he rest in peace. We really miss Greg, he was a terrific asset here, he was a friend of everyone on this Board, he worked hard for the city, he was always pleasant, and he could disagree with you without being disagreeable. So, we know, you know everything nice about him as well, but we just want you to know how much we miss him and how much we loved him. So, and I'm gonna ask Ernie Brunelli, who's our Majority Leader, come up and say a few words, and then Mayor O'Leary, so.
Thanks for coming. When Greg Hadley came to the Board of Aldermen, we all saw something special in him. And Greg worked himself up to be the Finance Chairman, Leadership Position on this Board. I'm proud of Greg as being a great Alderman and what he did for the community, but mostly the kind of person he was. A great family man, a man I respected and I truly miss. And I hope he's looking down on us and he's happy that we're honoring him, and thank you.
Thank you. So, I first got to know Greg and his great wife in 2011, we ran together. And we had a great summer and a great fall. And I learned so much about the Hadley family. And we got to be very close through those years up until last year. And I can tell you, family members, children, grandchildren, Greg Hadley was a man of his word, a man of faith, family, and as loyal as anybody possibly could be. And he did everything he did so kind, so sweet and compassionate. I never heard him ever cuss or swear, at least not to me. And he, and he really represented his community in such a remarkable way. And his, his presence commanded respect everywhere he went, especially when he walked into a meeting. He, he was a man of few words, but when he spoke, we listened. And we always, always took his advice and always believed in everything he said. And he's sorely missed and will always be missed. And I've just, I love his wife and I love the family, and I know that I'm speaking for everyone in the room. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The next item on the agenda would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the Board, please sign up with the City Sheriff, Mr. Conway. Please state your name and address for the record, there's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 327 Bucksville Road, Vincent Scognamiglial. Hi, I'm Vincent Scognamiglial, I live at 327 Bucksville Road in Waterbury. We have problems in the neighborhood at 189 Bucksville Road, there's a wall, I reported once it fell. It's gonna fall again, and hopefully a child going to school, they go, a lot of kids walk by it, hopefully it don't kill a kid. We have a problem with the sidewalk on North Main Street from, uh, the bottom of North Main by Perkins, it goes all the way up to Regan School, it's on the right-hand side. If you clear off the sidewalk and pave it, people will be able to walk on the sidewalk, not in the street. We also have a problem with people speeding on Bucksville Road. They're doing over a hundred when they go by our house at times. Then I have another question about, I had somebody do work at my house on October 20th, no, October 30th, 2018. Permit was pulled on January 29th, 2019. Gave a false statement to get the permit, that was 91 days later, they pulled the permit. The work was already done, like my wife says, the inspector Superman, he have an S on his chest, could he see inside walls to inspect stuff? I'm afraid not, they can't do that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, see what's gonna happen. I also reported it to the State Building Inspector.
Next speaker from 114 Chambers Street, Gracie Parker, Packer.
What's the name, Steve? Patrick?
Gracie, uh, Packer.
Is it Parker? Is she trying, I think she's trying to get through. No? Okay. All right, go ahead Steve, the next one.
Next speaker, next speaker from 69 Glen Rock Road, Joseph P. Nolan.
Good evening. My name is Joseph P. Nolan, I live at 69 Glen Rock Road in Waterbury, Connecticut. I'm a Gold Star Father and a Vietnam Veteran. I'm here tonight to support a resolution introduced by Mayor Neil O'Leary to proclaim the City of Waterbury a Gold Star Families City. My son Joe was killed in Iraq on November 18th, 2004. As a soldier, he was an Arabic linguist, translator, interpreter, and interrogator with the First Cavalry Division. Since Joe's death, our goal has been to keep his memory alive. Approving this Gold Star Families Resolution tonight would go a long way in remembering the lives of all of Waterbury's 529 fallen service members. Last May, at the Veterans Dinner at the Pawnee Club, I spoke to Mayor O'Leary. I mentioned that the Torrington Veterans had lobbied to designate Torrington a Purple Heart City. I asked Mayor O'Leary about making Waterbury a Gold Star City in honor of Joe and the other 528 Waterbury natives who have made the ultimate sacrifice in America's wars. I also spoke at a Board of Aldermen meeting last September 10th on the same issue. The resolution tonight could well be related to my conversation with Mayor O'Leary and the speech from last September. The Veterans Memorial Committee has approved of the idea and added the word "families." The resolution is that the City of Waterbury be designated a Gold Star Families City. I expect a big learning curve because some people are not aware of the Gold Star meaning or what a Gold Star Family represents. Thank you to Mayor O'Leary, Board of Aldermen Commissioners, and the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee for introducing the Gold Star Families City Resolution. Hopefully tonight's vote will make the resolution a reality. Thank you. And before, before I sit down, there's two things. On my lapel is something called a Gold Star Lapel Pin. This was given to our family by the Pentagon, by the Department of Defense after Joey died. You'll see, it's a very tiny pin, but has a Gold Star in the middle and a purple field and a, a golden wreath on the background. There's actually, there's a picture right over here that the Jack Shae put up before the meeting. The other thing, this was given to us by the First Cavalry Division soldiers at Fort Hood, Texas. This is called a Gold Star Banner. It's Joey's name is on the bottom, his unit, you know, the B Company, the 312th MI Battalion of First Cav, and the date of death. But there's, there's kind of a history behind this one as well. This first came, this was created during World War I, 1917. What families used to do, I know Larry DePillo is here tonight, his father and uncles, several that were in World War II, so what the families used to do is put up a Blue Star Banner in their windows, what a lot of families used to do. If one of these soldiers or one of the service members was, was killed in action, they would cover the Blue Star with a Gold Star. Hence the idea of the Gold Star Banner. It was used extensively, World War II, although we had a lot of casualties in Vietnam, this was not, was, was out of popularity because of the nature of everything that happened, but also the North Vietnamese flag had a Gold Star in it. So this was not that popular, but with Iraq and Afghanistan just came back into being, and the whole concept of the Gold Star Family is, is, is back in. I know a lot of people prefer not to talk about stuff like this, you know, many, many Gold Star parents that I've met prefer not to bring this subject up, but I think it's very, very important to bring up. And I certainly, again, as I said in my talk, I appreciate Mayor O'Leary and Board of Aldermen for considering this, and hopefully the vote, vote will, will be approved tonight. People need to know what's happened, and we wanna try to prevent this from happening in the future. At the same time, remember, remember the following. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 96 Windsor Street, Bob Dorr.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Aldermen. My name is Robert Dorr, I live at 96 Windsor Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. I am the Secretary Treasurer of the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee, and I rise tonight to speak about the resolution proclaiming the City of Waterbury as Gold Star Families City. Let's say that some of you are parents. Let's say that you raise a son or daughter to age 18 or 19. Let's say that that son or daughter was killed in service to our country. What does your country give you? I have in my hand what they give you. A box, a small little yellow box made in 1948. We're still working on the same inventory, by the way. In that box is a small Gold Star from a grateful nation. That's it. That's what they give you. We have a number of Gold Star Family Members here. Could we rise? Diane, her father was lost in World War II. Mary Kite, Joseph Nolan, Mary's son, lost in Vietnam. Audrey Harrell, her brother, lost in Vietnam. So we are here tonight, the Waterbury Veterans Memorial Committee, to support Mayor Neil M. O'Leary in this resolution proclaiming Waterbury as a Gold Star Family City. 529 families from Waterbury, since the Revolution to this day have made that sacrifice. So we thank you for your favorable opinion of this measure, and we look forward to continuing that tradition of service that the City of Waterbury has made for our nation. Thank you.
Next speaker from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Woods.
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. Tonight, we're having a combination of important things brought to your attention, one of which is honoring Greg Hadley. Now Greg took upon himself the idea that maybe he should leave things better than when he found them, and he did. But one of the important things that Greg did that you all are gonna have to pick up and do is to prepare younger people to take your place. If you don't do that, then you're not earning your seat. We need to have new people come in, trained, knowledgeable, dedicated as you are. You're dedicated, share it with somebody on your street, down the block, at your school, in your neighborhood. And then, of course, we have our Gold Star Commitment. If any of you have ever seen the blood baths that we have been able, had to been put through at different times, you recognize the importance of having a Gold Star City. The gift that we've given with blood cannot be measured, it can only be honored and taken into a dedication. Peace be with you, Dominus Purviscom.
Next speaker from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence DePillo.
Thank you, Lawrence DePillo from 11 Steuben Street. I'd like to thank Mr. Joseph Nolan for mentioning my dad and his brothers who served in World War II. My dad's mom, my grandmother, was a Gold Star Mother. My dad, a Gold Star Family. I'd like to talk tonight about something that was in today's paper. O'Leary plans to tap the Nogatuck Valley, a new agency, partner with municipalities. He wouldn't do away with the city's current quasi-public development agency, the Waterbury Development Corporation. It will begin with the hiring of an executive who will oversee both agencies and use the current WDC staff for regional projects as well as city-based development, O'Leary said. Plans to tap the Nogatuck Valley Development Corp., a nonprofit which had served the city's quasi-public development agency until 2005. The NVDC would bring reserves of more than $2 million to the new mission. Michael O'Connor was the paid head of NVDC and then the WDC before moving into private industry. Today, he's an executive at Webster Bank, but still active as a volunteer head of the NVDC, and his current incarnation is a nonprofit that meets a few times a year. O'Connor said the NVDC is agreeable to going back to work for the city. He's been helping O'Leary plan the new entity, but said he has no interest in being a paid executive. The new regional agency will call upon civic and business leaders from involved towns, and they have highly motivated people. You know, this is like the fourth agency the City of Waterbury's had. And you know, we really have to, we really have to do something for the Waterbury residents. I'm tired of hearing about the region. Because the region is not interested in Waterbury except for the services they can take from Waterbury, not what they give to Waterbury. Now, you know, if, first of all, we have a Waterbury Development Agency, no one wants to talk about that. That's a charter board. It was the original agency for the city and owns several of the industrial parks. But we've sort of wiped that away in creating the Nogatuck Valley Development Agency, who by the way, somehow thinks that $2 million is theirs. Let me remind you that the W, the NVDC started by taking city-owned property, which was the commons, that was sold and took that money, our money, to start the NVDC. And then loaned it out, and then created this asset, this $2 million asset they have, which they now think they have a philanthropic right to decide who they're gonna give it to. That's our money, was our money when we owned the commons, that we had to pay millions of dollars to get back. Because the city, then NVDC, was only interested in the money it would bring, not making sure that if they defaulted in any way, we got the property back. So we had to pay to get it back. And then we created the Waterbury Development, not an agency, we already have one, corporation. And now that's the development arm, and we're gonna now create another regional agency with another person overlooking both of them. You know, whatever happened to going back to the Waterbury Development Agency, whose business it was to take care of Waterbury and bring industry to Waterbury? Now let's talk about the region and the people this mayor wants to bring to the table. Well, how about Watertown? They wanna come to the table? Well, how about if they start paying their water and sewer bill? That's already maybe $2 million in arrears. Because they're paying, instead of our $2.42 for sewer, 88 cents. And instead of our $2.77 for water, a dollar 33.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
And they're saying they're not gonna pay it. They wanna go to arbitration. But they wanna join the region so that they can enjoy the police services and fire services and everything else we provide to them. We're never gonna need their police department or fire department, don't want anybody ever kid you. And how about Wilkit? Well, let's bring them in. Well, they're paying 86 cents for their sewer versus our $2.042. How about if we have these people pay their bills and become equal to what we're paying? The mayor doesn't say a word about them. And let's take Prospect, you remember that big deal, we're gonna build that big office building, and they were gonna bring all this market rate housing to that area? Well, we provided them with the utilities, they built their office building, and there's no market rate housing. So next, when the mayor comes here and tells you about this wonderful agency and working with the region, how about if we get a mayor that works for Waterbury?
That's time, Mr. DePillo.
Because that's what the people in their towns work for, their towns. Thank you.
Next speaker from 11 Mountain Park Avenue, John Harmon Jr.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the Board of Aldermen. I came here this evening to speak about one issue, but after I heard Mr. Nolan, I have to at least comment on what he said and support what he said. And the Gold Star Families' proclamation is something that we should all support. And I wanna thank you, Mr. Nolan, and your son for your service. I came here tonight because I, I found out that you were giving a recognition to my good friend Greg Hadley. And I just wanted to, I know you already made the presentation, I was, I was kinda come up here and encourage you to make sure that that presentation was made tonight. Greg represented the community well, and he represented all of us well. And he was a very good friend of mine, and he made a heck of a pancake breakfast at the WOW Center. And I hope that that continues. But I wanted to thank the Board of Aldermen for, for highlighting and supporting Greg and his wife and his family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 35-37 Grant Street, Valerie Jones Perkins.
Good evening. I am Valerie Jones Perkins, I own Chapel Memorial Funeral Home here in Waterbury. In 2003, I was granted, from the city, new sidewalks. And I'm coming up on 16 years, waiting for this. I have the actual letter where it was granted, and nothing's happened. So I just need to know what the process is and how come this has taken so long?
This is not a, we don't do back and forth, so you can...
Okay, so I can just give you this letter and someone will give back?
Yeah, you can just give it to the clerk, and, or give it, give it to Mr. Conway, he'll get it to the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. First of all, I'd like to start with the Hadleys. It was a real honor and a privilege to have known your husband, your father. He taught me an awful lot when I became Commissioner of the Parks, and what it is to be a public servant and serve everybody. And he always emphasized, everybody, no matter if it's your park or not, to service everybody. And I'll never forget that, and I'll never forget all of his help. And I, I just think he was one great guy. And we could all, we all need more Greg Hadleys in our life. Secondly, I would ask that you support the amendment on the Gold Star Families. Every year around Veterans Day and every day, when I put up that flag in the morning at Dogon Elementary School, there's not a day that goes by that I don't think, and I think I represent the millions of Americans, unfortunately, that... I represent the millions of Americans unfortunately, that don't get the media attention, that thank your families and you guys every day. You, you paid the ultimate sacrifice, losing a family member for our freedom. And, you know, I've learned over the years of the greatest generation from my grandfather, who was in the Navy, and listening to Mr. Nolan about his son and many others in my age group that are out there fighting today for our freedoms. Whether you agree with the wars or not, these people are fighting for our freedom every day, and we need to do whatever is right for their families. So I want to thank you not only for your loved one's service, but for your service every day to us. Thank you. And I just got to say, on a night when we're here celebrating heroes and, and, and a good person, you know, there's plenty of times to talk about the agenda and disagreements. I didn't think that tonight was one of them. But we need to stop this collusion out there that Waterbury is, is going downhill. Waterbury is going to be and continues to be a great place. That's what Mr. Hadley fought for every day and his family. That's what all these members and their families fought for every day. And we need to support all these people, and we need to support the continued success of our city. So I just want to commend all you guys, and hopefully we can pass all these amendments. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritt Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritt Road. I'm just really happy and delighted that Karen Harabee is here tonight, Hadley. And, you know, I, I know Greg was on the Human Rights Commission with us when, you know, God rest his soul, Reverend Mallory was there. And he served for honor with us, honor and distinction. And he was a good friend of mine, and every time I needed to talk to him, he was always there. I know I called him up sometimes late at night, and he still would answer the call and get back to me, and he was just a great guy. And so he's going to be sadly missed. I still, I still think about Greg when we go to our Human Rights Commission meetings. And, you know, he just was a guy that was, far as I'm concerned, a top-notch gentleman. And I want to let you know, I do miss him an awful lot. He was a good friend. Speaking about the Human Rights Commission, I just want to mention something that Brenda, all the women, sorry, got to say all the women. Brenda Colton put together that I am chairman of the Human Rights Commission right now, and we're going to have an event coming up, April 3rd, in the Waterbury City Hall Veterans' Room. A list of individuals and organizations that will address issues as far as human rights go for immigration, deportation, and the Trust Act. I just wanted to thank Brenda, and I, you know, she worked really hard. I know I was working with her on this. So everybody in this room who's concerned about human rights for the city of Waterbury, whether you agree with deportation or not, whatever you agree with, just come to the meeting. Because Brenda did put this together, and I give Brenda an awful lot of credit for doing this, because she did it in record time, right Brenda? Probably within a couple of weeks, she put everything together. So again, I want to thank you. Another thing I want to say, Mr. Nolan, I want to congratulate you, and I thank you for honoring, and I'm honored that you serve your country and your son. And, you know, I did have family members that got killed in the war, going back to the Revolutionary War, the Civil War, World War I, World War II, Korea. And I have three members that run the wall in Vietnam, that they got killed in Vietnam at a young age. So thank you for your service. All right, I'm very honored to be here with the Veterans Memorial Committee, and I'm honored to be here today to support whatever you guys want to do. Because you know, we, a lot of people, they don't know this, but Bob knows that us Civil War V actors, we show up, sometimes with Lincoln, sometimes with not. And we show up at the Ford Hill Cemetery, or down with helicopters, Veterans Memorial Park, and we, sometimes we're in a parade, but we do shoot off our muskets to honor the veterans. And I know John Sarlow knows, we've been doing that for a long time. And he said, Martin, make sure you guys clean your guns, because we want some good noise here. And I know Sam Beeman, God rest his soul, he just say the same thing. And he said, this is awesome for what you guys do. So I'm honored to be here with you people. I've just had some other things I just wanted to say, because I don't want to run out of time over here. I did want to say that we have a new appointment on the Human Rights Commission, and I got to find her name. But anyways, she's, she just got reappointed on the board, and I, and I'm glad that she's a new member of the board. And I'm hopefully that, you know, she's going to be really happy to be on there, because I know she's been asking me for a while to get on the board, but I'm sorry, I just don't have her name in front of me, but I do apologize. But anyways, she's going to be serving on our board, and I'm really glad that she's going to be coming on the board. So again, I just want to say that this people over here, we all got to be involved with whatever we got to do, especially for the Human Rights Commission. And people got to get involved, because what Brenda is putting together here is very important, vitally important. And I believe a lot of people should show up, irregardless, like I said, not to repeat myself, how you feel. But it's important that people would show up and, and come to the meeting. And I know a gentleman was talking about before about speeding, and I was hoping you guys do something. Remember, I brought a presentation last meeting about some speed, do not speed signs. And I left them here with the Board of Alderman. And hopefully, we could maybe get those placed in Waterbury, because people have been speeding up and down Chase Avenue on my way to work today. I mean, I saw some ghost cars around Waterbury, and I appreciate that. I know we got a whole bunch of new police officers coming in, but you know, they're putting people's lives in danger. Because the last time I spoke to my insurance lady, she said, there's two reasons why, Mr. Spring, your insurance is so high in Waterbury. Because of people stealing cars, stuff of cars, and many accidents in the city of Waterbury causes a great liability for a lot of people. So anyway, I remember her name now, Shanika Howard. Anybody knows Shanika. She's a wonderful person, and she's going on Human Rights Board.
Shakina Howard.
What is it? Okay, all right, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. While we have all of the folks who were here for the Gold Star Families Resolution, unless there's an objection, what I'd like to do is, initially I thought that that was, it's been approved by the mayor, didn't need any action from us, but further conversations have indicated that the city, the mayor's office particularly, would like to do it as a joint resolution with the Board of Alderman. So what I would propose we do is add this as item number 13. We can refer to the committee of the whole, and we could take it up right now while they're all still here, so they don't have to stay till the end of the meeting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to add, as new business item number 13, the mayor's Gold Star Family Resolution Designating Waterbury a Gold Star Family City. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the item's added. We still have to take action on it. Wait, Bob.
Not a vote.
Give us one minute to take, that's just to add it to the agenda. So now, with that, I would entertain a motion that we resolve ourselves into the committee of the whole to consider new business item number 13.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. So with that, the item before the board then would be the resolution Designating Waterbury a Gold Star Family City, is already approved by the mayor, which would read, whereas for more than two centuries, Waterburians have answered the call to defend and preserve the principles of democracy ascribed in the Declaration of Independence, and whereas 529 sons and daughters of Waterbury have sacrificed their lives for the preservation of freedom and domestic tranquility since the Revolutionary War, and whereas the families of those 529 sons and daughters of Waterbury, Waterbury's Gold Star Families, have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the safety and well-being of our nation, and whereas the citizens of Waterbury, Connecticut will never forget the indefatigable legacies of those who sacrificed their lives as well as the families they left behind. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Neil M. O'Leary, do hereby proclaim the city of Waterbury a Gold Star Family City. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we approve this resolution and adopt it as a, as a joint resolution of this board and the mayor of the city of Waterbury.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the resolution is adopted, Waterbury is designated a Gold Star Family And I just, I do want to just thank Mr. Nolan, Mrs. Kike, who I know we see at a lot of the ceremonies for coming here tonight, all of the veterans committee, the mayor's office, Alderman Sherman, the Giancarlo and Dorso for putting this forward. Thank you all for all that you've done, and thank you for your sacrifices. And with that, I would entertain a motion that we return to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Motion having been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And with that, the next item on the, on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for Monday, March 11th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Motion approved, the minutes of the regular meeting for Monday, March 11th, 2019. So moved.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any, any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. With that, we will go into our committees. I just want to make a note that item number 10, some of you got the attachments, some of you did not. I think they were all online, but they are all online now if you want to go on and see them or get them. And with respect to item number 12, you should have in front of you tonight the tax clearance for Mr. Derwin, which was not part of the original package. So with that, we'll recess into committees. We'll begin with the Finance Committee, and then we'll go to the Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number one, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the suspension of delinquent account balances for the fiscal year 2018-2019, as submitted by Frank Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Caruso. I was curious if you might know why we have such a huge influx or huge number in the 2015 year of delinquent taxes compared to other years prior and following?
Well, we've been putting out, every year we go to suspense, I'm required by statute to. The 15-year, I wait a year before I put personal property in. So every year, that's, it's about the same as it is every other year. But it, but it's always, I wait a year before I do personal property.
So next year, we can expect something similar for '16?
And it's high, well, the cars are high, because that's, that's tied in with the tax serve contract.
Okay.
So as soon as it goes to suspense, I'm turning it over to the collection agency for collections.
And I think you mentioned in, in these requests to dissolve these, we, we still have a means to go after.
Oh yeah, no, these have nothing to do with collections. There's just, it's an accounting function. It just moves from a, from a, from an active list into a suspense list, but it's still collectible for the full 15 years. So it doesn't affect collections at all, or, or collectible.
Understood. And maybe you can or cannot answer this question. So a person that's in arrears on a vehicle property tax, would this keep them from registering a new vehicle as well as selling the vehicle they're delinquent on?
Oh yes. It's still, because that's, moving to the suspense just, just moves it off the, off the active rate bill, but it's still collectible for 15 years. And it's still, we turn it over to the collection agency. That, that's why the current year is high, because it's going to the collection agency April 1st.
Understood.
So it's still, it's still...
Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Further discussion? I have a question for you. Do we lean, do we lean automobiles like we lean real estate property?
No.
Why not?
Well, we used to years ago, but we, we can't really lean a car. We used to lean real estate against the car. We did that years ago. But we had a lot of problems with it, because we were leading parents, we were leaning fathers for their sons if it wasn't, if they didn't register like by junior or senior. So we got into a lot of, you know, I think our Corporation Council years ago, we stopped doing that maybe like, well, 15 years ago.
And we don't, it is property, correct? It is personal property, just like your real estate is property? So we stopped it for a couple of problems?
Well, we were leaning cars against, we were leaning cars against their real estate. We weren't leaning the actual car. We were putting a lien on the car, but we were leaning the real estate for the car.
And your, in your office, have you ever done a study for houses versus cars, registered to those houses, just by streets? I can guarantee you, you go down a street and you go down that real estate tax line, and you go down that car tax line, you're having a lot of cars missing. Has that something you ever done, audited it?
Well, that would be more the assessor. I don't really, I'm, I'm more the collection side. I don't do anything with liability or, I mean, I know, I mean, that's more of a question for Dave.
Okay. In your opinion though, I mean, would you, would you believe that to be true?
Oh, we have a huge problem. We have a huge problem.
Okay.
A huge problem with, and unregistered also, we have a huge problem.
So if we have a huge problem, maybe we should think about maybe leaning again, or no?
I don't know if leaning would do. I mean, if you don't register and you're violating state law by not registering, is a lien really going to do anything? And you have to own property to be able to lean it.
Right.
You know, I mean, it's not going to, we're already flagging registrations. I mean, it's...
So how do we fix the problem? Because if you lean it, or you don't even lean it, you just, you block them from registering another vehicle, how do we fix the problem?
I mean, we're already flagging DMV. And I, DMV put a new system in place, and it's going to take where everybody has unique IDs now, but it's only been in place for a couple of years. So your registration, if you look at your registration, there's a unique ID to your license. So now, when you register your license, your registration, everything has a unique ID. And we're picking up a lot more people, but, but it's going to, it's only been in place maybe four years. So it has to go, run through a few more cycles before it really gets, I feel I think it really gets effective.
Okay. All right, thank you. Further discussion?
Just have a quick question. Have you discussed any other remedies with Corporation Council on how to collect these, the money? Any other?
Well, we're going out, we're turning it over to the collection agency. That's where our cars are going out to a collection agency. We have a contract with tax serves. Believe it or not, we have, we actually have a pretty good collection rate. Every year, we're coming in at 97. So our collection rate for a major city, our collection rate is pretty high. You know, you see the numbers and it looks, you know, but our, but a major city that has a 97% collection rate is pretty, you know, is actually pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item number four.
I have to recuse myself from this vote.
Item four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG agreement, for CDYR 44 between the city of Waterbury and the Housing Authority. The CDBG agreement is for a two-year term, as submitted by Diane C. Toulon, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion carries. Item number five, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve substantial amendment number four for CDYR 41, 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan to reallocate funds from BCH Equipment to construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project in the amount of $78,507.83, as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you, and this may bleed over into some of the other items in reference to the Food Hub. This is a continuance of what was in front of the Board a few meetings ago, I assume with the redesign.
Supranovos, the Executive Director of Brass City Harvest is also here this evening with respect to answering those questions.
I'm sorry, Supranovos Brass City Harvest.
So it is?
It's the same.
So this is simply just funding those changes that we made in that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve substantial amendments number three for CDYR 42, 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan to reallocate funds from BCH Fixed Equipment and Capital Infrastructure in the amount of $135,000 to construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project and Amendment Number Four to the CDYR 42, 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan to cancel the St. Joseph's Community Center project allocation of $300,000 and reallocate it to construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project, as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number seven, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve substantial amendment number one for CDYR 44, 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan to cancel the YMCA Annex at Rose Hill project allocation of $300,000 and reallocate it to construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project, as submitted by Diane C. Tulen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Alderman Sherman?
Thank you again, thank you. Now, understanding this is a critical component for economic development in the area, do we, do you know if there's any plans to fund the areas that these monies are being taken from, like the Annex of Rose Hill?
The Annex for Rose Hill, the YMCA relinquished that because it really was a bit premature for that money to set for this year, but they have come back and requested money for this year that we're currently planning for, and they are in the draft plan for CDYR 45. So they have asked for this amount for money in order to do the acquisition and/or leasing of the facility.
So have we already approved funding for the Annex?
No, that, it's in the draft stage now.
Okay.
For CDYR 45. It was just published in Saturday's paper. It was a large display ad and it's now out for a 30-day comment period and the CAC will hold a public hearing on that on April the 9th. And then it ultimately comes to the Board of Aldermen.
So then we'll be looking to shift. Is it going to cost $600,000 for Rose Hill in the end? I'm trying to understand that.
The amount that they requested is $600,000 for this year, but they have been reduced slightly in the $550,000 range. And at this point, the city does not yet have its final allocation from HUD. So we're planning as though we're getting the same level funding that we received this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 11, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer within the city's general fund budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019 in the amount of $30,000, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Standing. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $56,929.04, submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
Chris.
I'd like to call and to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting scheduled for March 25th. The first item on our agenda is item number two. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the resolution proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Waterbury, as submitted by Michael Gilmore, Reinvestment Manager, Waterbury Development Corporation, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item number two.
I have a motion to approve item number two, which has been seconded. Any discussion on item number two? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence Water Project. Task number two, improvements to Jackson Street. And task number three, improvements to Meadow Street, as submitted by Salvatore Porzio, Project Manager, P. Public Works Department, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item number three.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number three, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves an occupancy agreement at a term of three years with an option of two additional three-years terms at no cost with Staywell Health Center Incorporated to occupy Suite Number 103 in the Commons Building, located between North End Middle School and Willby High Schools, as submitted by Kerry A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Is there anyone, is there a representative from the Board of Ed here today?
BOE, BOE. Karen was here, she's gone.
Yeah, or the reason I'm interjecting is just that I don't think this is what I read on the paperwork. I read two, I read a one-year, three-year term and then a possible additional two years.
After three.
Yes.
Not additional three.
Yeah, if you guys can find number eight and guide me a little bit, maybe I misread it.
Oh no, that's right.
Nope, it is correct. Thank you, Council.
Oh, you love my early answer. Okay, that means leave while you can. All right, thank you, thank you all.
Any discussion on item number eight? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a contract for the temp agency, and I believe that temp agency has a name, which is in the paperwork, to provide registered nurses on an as-needed basis to ensure a registered nurse for each school, according to CRT 18-312, as submitted by Cynthia Vatone, Assistant Director of Public Health, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve item number nine.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number nine, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Is there anyone here from the Public Health Department?
Cynthia Vatone from Waterbury Public Health and my colleague.
Lois Mulhern, School Nurse Manager.
Okay, it's just, I want to clarify something. On the motion, the paperwork says temp agency, but I did read that the agency that has been selected is Delta T Group. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves an Engineering Services Agreement, RFQ Number 9649, for Waterbury Downtown Traffic Signal System Upgrade, SPN 151-325, between the City of Waterbury and VN Engineers Incorporated, as submitted by Paul Belagamba, P.E., City Engineer, Public Works Department Bureau of Engineering, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item number 10.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number 10, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Matthews?
The signal change, is this for the upgrades that are going to be going downtown on East Main Street?
Paul Belagamba, City Engineer. This is 15 intersections in a downtown area between Meadow Street and North and South Elm Street.
Okay. So you're going to change all the signals?
We're going to, we're going to have this engineer do a study and a redesign.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen does not disapprove, is that a double negative? The appointment of the following individual to board, Ted Derwin, Jr., to the Fireboard Commission, term commencing January 1st, 2018, ending December 31st, 2022. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to not disapprove, item number 12.
Second.
Term commencing January 1st, 2018, ending December 31st, 2021. I have a motion to accept, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
All right, with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one is on consent to approve the suspension of delinquent tax account balances for the fiscal year 2018-2019. Item two is on consent to approve a resolution proclaiming the month of April 2019 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Waterbury. Item three is on consent to approve the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence Project, Task Two, improvements to the Jackson Street and Task Three, improvements to Meadow Street, as submitted by Salvatore Porzio. Item four, we're not going to put on consent for this evening. Item five is on consent to approve a substantial amendment for number, amendment number four for CD Year 41 Annual Action Plan to reallocate funds from the BCH Equipment to construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project in the amount of $78,507.83. Item six is on consent to approve a substantial amendment number three for CD Year 42 Annual Action Plan to reallocate funds from BCH Fixed Equipment and Capital Infrastructure in the amount of $135,000 to construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project. An amendment number four to the CD Year 42 Annual Action Plan to cancel the St. Joseph's Community Center project allocation of $300,000 and reallocate it to the construction costs of Phase One of the Food Hub Project. Item seven is on consent to approve substantial amendment number one for CD Year 44 Annual Action Plan to cancel the YMCA Annex at Rose Hill project allocation of $300,000 and reallocate it to the construction costs for Phase One of the Food Hub Project. Item number eight is on consent to approve an occupancy agreement at a term of three years with an option of two additional three-years at no cost with Staywell Healthcare to occupy Suite Number 103 in the Commons Building, located between North End Middle School and Willby High Schools. Item number nine is on consent to approve a contract for temp agency to provide registered nurses on an as-needed basis to ensure a registered nurse for each school. Item 16 is on consent to approve an Engineering Services Agreement for Waterbury Downtown Traffic Signal System Upgrade between the City of Waterbury and VN Engineering, Inc. Item 11 is on consent to approve a budget transfer within the city's general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019, in the amount of $30,000. Item number 12 is on consent not to disapprove the appointment of Ted Derwin, Jr., to the Fireboard Commission for a term commencing January 1, 2018, and expiring December 31, 2021. And item number 13 is on consent to approve the joint resolution designating Waterbury a Gold Star Families City. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved, the consent calendar as read.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent calendar passes unanimously and is approved. With that, the Chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Von Carlo as Chair of the Finance Committee with respect to new business item number four. But before we do that, the reason we pulled it off consent is both Alderman Dorso and Alderman Weaver are going to recuse themselves because both of them are on boards that are affected by the action that we're taking this evening. So they're both gonna go out. And with that, we'll turn it over to Alderman Dijo Von Carlo as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $56,929.04 submitted by... Excuse me, Mr. President. What did you just pull?
Item number four.
Yes, I apologize. I thought I was reading that one.
Which one were you doing? Oh. Goes to show you how much I'm paying attention. I didn't know.
Item number four, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Community Development Block Grant, the CDBG agreement for CDYR 44 between the City of Waterbury and the Housing Authority. The CDBG agreement is for a two-year term as submitted by Diane C. Toolen, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
Motion to approve item number four.
Motion made by Alderman Martinez McCarthy and seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Item number four is approved. Would you just tell, Sarah, can you just grab them and tell them they can come back in? All right, with that, we'll go to standing committees. Alderman Dijo Von Carlo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $56,929.04 submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Jr., Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Martinez McCarthy, seconded by Alderman Kula. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the refunds are approved. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
No, I'm sorry. Alderman Nujay?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to let the board and the public know the Fourth District Aldermen are doing a coffee and conversation this Saturday at Cheshire Coffee House right by Costco from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. Any questions, concerns, anything you'd like to share with us? Feel free to stop for a cup of coffee with, and talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Weaver? Thank you. Alderman Koto?
Thank you. As Mr. Spring mentioned, the City of Waterbury Human Rights Commission is hosting a forum on Immigration, Deportation, and the Trust Act. We are inviting all members of the Board of Aldermen, different departments, and other boards and commissions to attend. It's gonna be held on Wednesday, April 3rd, from 6:45 to 8:45, and it's gonna be at the Betterlands Memorial Hall. And our intentions are to initiate a positive and constructive conversation between our city officials, organizations, and residents, also to inform our community about the most current and accurate information in regards to immigration, deportation, and the Trust Act, and to raise awareness, get stakeholders involved, and to provide our residents with resources as needed. Our speakers are gonna be Waterbury Chief of Police Fernando Spagnolo, the Connecticut Immigrants Rights Alliance, IRA, Unidad Latina en Acción, ULA, Merit and Cancel, Miguel Castro, La Fontaine Immigration Law, LLC, and Jay Molina, Immigration Law, LLC. So we are inviting all residents and, again, the members of the Board of Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? That, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any, no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We're adjourned. Natalie and your family, thank you so much for coming. You guys are real troopers. You made it to the very end tonight, so thank you.